I can think of the right. I'm trying to think. 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 I'm trying to think.
In between? First. There we go. 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 There we go.
I would like to call the USD three oh five, board mean order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Uh, yes, Madam President, under item four, recognitions and presentations, I'd like to add an additional presentation inserted as item B. It'd be for B and then move for B to foresee would be for student recognition and the presenter would be Curtis Stevens.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as corrected?
Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda as corrected.
Okay, I have a motion, one second. I have a motion in a second, all those who favor, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations, starting with our superintendent's excellence awards with Ms. Bradford Vernon.
Good evening. Today we will recognize spring sport state qualifiers who were involved in regional and state playoff action beyond the end of last year. Please keep in mind that some of our coaches and the teams will not be here due to fall sports and some of the students graduated in May. There were six golfers from Central High who qualified for state. Patrick Newell is the coach, will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the golfers please line up with them?
Oh, one.
As I call your name, please step toward Mr. Hall so you can receive your award and at that time, parents, if you'd like to take a picture, go ahead and stand up and we'll be glad to pause. State qualifiers were Mark Grammer, sophomore. Evan Lambert, senior. Brayden Newshaper.
Sign on the dotted line.
Brayden Newshaper, senior. Graduates were Jack Shetler, Harrison Jet, and Dane Hoffman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Let's keep up the good work. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you, Coach.
Congratulations, keep swinging, congratulations, Pat.
There were six golf students at South High qualified for state. Jason Hooper is the coach, will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? Will our golf students please line up next, Mr. Hall and his sponsor at this time? Team members were Josh Reed, junior. Ross Bowling, junior. Parker Norton, freshman. Parker Wrens, freshman. And graduates were Logan Kogle and Brendan Borckerting. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Who's that?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Good job.
Good job. Hey, good job, hey, congratulations.
Our next group of awards go to South High athletes who qualified for the five A state track meet. Due to football practice today, Coach Justin Ebert won't be able to attend, Jody Nutter, assistant head coach, will present the track team. Will you please join Mr. Hall and will all the track students please join them? In the boys division, there were eleven South High qualifiers, four of those have graduated. Team members were Evan Irish, junior, placed eighth in the javelin. Tanner Rubenstein, junior, placed eighth in the four by four relay and qualified in the three hundred meter hurdles and one hundred meter. Devon Johnson, junior, placed eighth in the four by four relay and qualified in the triple jump. Daniel Atkins, sophomore, placed eighth in the four by four relay and qualified in the four hundred meter. Josh Reed, junior, qualified in the thirty-two hundred meter. Ethan Branham, junior, qualified in the pole vault. Jaden Miller, freshman, qualified in the discus. The four who graduated are Brandon Magazine, D'Angelo Turner, Danielle DeWinn, Stephen Slaton. In the girls division, there were two qualifiers who have graduated, Bailey Stamps and Deja Roadman. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you. Nice job. Well, congratulations. Thank you so much.
Good job. Thank you for coaching.
Next, we recognize Central High School athletes who qualified for the five A state track meet. Due to football practice, Coach Rick O'Neil won't be able to attend, but Joe Wilkerson, head coach, assistant coach, will represent the track team. Will you please join Mr. Hall and will all the track students please join them? In the girls division, there were eight Central High qualifiers. Team members were Teagan Richardson, junior, placed fifth in the four by four hundred relay. Alisa Backus, sophomore, placed fifth in the four by four hundred relays and ninth in three hundred meter low hurdles. Zoe Counts, sophomore, placed fifteenth in the four by eight hundred relay. Tabitha Dynas, sophomore, placed fifteenth in the four by eight hundred relay. Kaia Arkan, freshman, placed fifth in the four by four hundred relay and fifteenth in the four by eight hundred relay. Graduates were Jetta Green, Haley Turner, and Sienna Pope. In the boys division, there were five Central High qualifiers. Team members were Branson Bassinger, sophomore, placed thirteenth in the four by eight hundred meter relay. And Tyler Olmstead, sophomore, produced or placed thirteenth in the four by eight hundred meter relay. Graduates were Andrew Rutherford, Elijah One Zimmerman, and Adrian Castelli. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for what you did.
Congratulations, well done, thanks, Coach.
Hey, good job. Great job. Hey, thank you.
Our next group of awards goes to baseball state qualifiers at South High. Chris Mize is the coach. Assistant coaches are Tyler Burnett, Chris Bowley, and Jeremiah Thornton. Will you please join Mr. Hall and will all the baseball students also line up? Team members were Cade Peters, junior. Cruz Aranda, junior. Austin Jensen, junior. Justin Sullivan, junior. Lane Haddock, sophomore. Peyton Webb, sophomore. Tiger Hum, sophomore. Ethan Resley, sophomore. And graduates were Cooper Long, Justin Allen, Tyler Short, Dylan Becker, Cole Calvert, Jacob Yaroswitz, Jacob Foster, and Trenton Baird. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. Great performance. Congratulations. Congratulations. Appreciate your work, but congratulations. Thank you for what you did. Congratulations.
Thank you, Coach.
Great job. Congratulations. Thank you for your work.
There were two tennis state qualifiers at South High who participated in the state tennis championships. They have both graduated. Ryan Stewart is their coach, the state qualifiers were Logan Harner and Matt Bernaking. Congratulations to both of them. Our next group of awards tonight goes to tennis state qualifiers at Central High. Only one state qualifier has not graduated. And due to a Lady Mustang tennis meet today in Goddard, Coach Michael Gall won't be here to attend. I invite Will Hayes to the front. Will Hayes, junior, qualified and finished ninth in five A singles. Graduates were JD McHenry and Zach Hilbig, who were state champions in five A doubles, and Mason Corbett and James Michael, who qualified for state but did not medal. Would you please allow the Board to congratulate you now?
Congratulations. You had a good performance.
Congratulations. Good job, Mr.
Congratulations.
Our last group of awards goes to swimmers at Central High who qualified for state competition in May. Don Shefferton coaches the girls swimming and diving teams for South and Central High. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And if any swimming students are here this evening, they can also come to the front. And we will name them. Salinas Central team members were Garnett Peeler, senior, Chloe Pettijohn, sophomore, Riley Garner, sophomore, Alina Ewing, senior, Carol Gutsch, junior. A graduate was Akia Hagan, who placed ninth in the one meter diving. There were no state qualifiers at South High this year. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you?
John, thanks for what you did.
Thank you for all the time. Thank you for your support.
We'll be moving on in our agenda to Mr. Curtis Stevens and your presentation.
Madam President, I want to thank the Board for adjusting the agenda tonight. Whenever I receive emails every day, I never know what kind of challenger opportunity is going to come my way. Earlier this week, I received an email from the Kansas State High School Activities Association for an unusual occurrence. And immediately when I opened up that email, I thought, oh, no, what's this about? And I'd like to share with you some information that came from an official named Dale Heckathorn, who was officiating during the Bishop Carroll game. These are the comments that he wrote. During the fourth quarter of the game, a play went out of bounds and knocked down a woman taking pictures of the game. Noticing that the woman on the ground, number twenty-three at cornerback, Devon Johnson for Salinas South, ran over to help the woman to her feet. The woman knocked down was a Bishop Carroll fan, as her Bishop Carroll jersey indicated. And the player helping her up was from Salinas South. So the simple act of helping an opponent's fan was unique. My back judge shook his head and complimented the player. And we decided that this is something worth reporting to you after the game. A true act of sportsmanship and good character, Dale Heckathorn. Yesterday, that student was recognized in front of our site council. Devon Johnson cannot be here this evening because he is practicing football, which is at this point in time, something that obviously he wanted to do. But I wanted to make a public acknowledgement of that. We work very, very hard to give character education in all kinds of ways, not only in the classroom, but our coaches and mentoring them. And I felt like that was something that the Board needed to hear. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on in our agenda to Mr. Upson's presentation on Building Works and the Facility Maintenance System.
I think each of you have this presentation on your desktops, if you want to go and pull it up, please.
Good evening. This evening, I want to talk about a product called DataSphere, which is provided by a company called Building Works. So the agenda, we'll talk about what DataSphere is, the benefits of DataSphere and how it works, what our options are with that product, should we choose to purchase it, and how much it costs. So getting into what it is. DataSphere is an interactive organized directory of building information. And this slide is a whole big mouthful, so I've tried to emphasize the key words in this. As we move through the bond program, and of importance to me is the keeping track of the information and data that is provided during the construction process. Information like how things got built, what products we use when we build them, what kind of operations and maintenance information is provided with products, what kind of warranty comes with each of the products that we have. So DataSphere is a way to organize all that information online so that it's readily accessible in the future when we need it. It's really easy to access and the information doesn't live out in the web somewhere or in the cloud. It actually lives on our servers, we own it. So the benefits, you know, I looked at coming into the USD three oh five and the records that we have kept through the years. We've got a lot of records and they're all in paper copy and they're all somewhat scattered about in file folders and file boxes. We do have methods for keeping track of them. They are hard because they walk away. They're paper copies and somebody comes and takes what they need to look at and it may or may not ever get back into the file. So it's difficult. In the cases, in most of our attendance centers, the work that we're doing is maybe twenty or thirty percent of the school. So the data that we're collecting during the bond program is not all-inclusive data that represents the entirety of the school. It represents a small portion of the school. We've dealt with that data using the IPD services, which the Board approved a long time ago to use that. We will be using a different method for that. At the high schools, though, they're a little bit unique, a lot bit unique. They're our largest attendance centers by a long shot. Lots and lots of square footage and lots and lots of equipment installed in our, both of our high schools and will be new at the end of the bond program. So we're essentially rebuilding both of our high schools. And we will probably, no time in the future unless we choose to build a new high school, have as much data about what went on when we built the project. So this data is good. What DataSphere provides is one single source for the information and it's digitally maintained. And I'm going to jump back and I'm going to play the YouTube video on the product. And we'll let the company speak about it, I guess.
The Building Works Inc. DataSphere allows you to be connected electronically to valuable closeout documents for the life of your building. DataSphere is the as-built of the information that flows during construction. Quickly and easily, anyone can find and retrieve data to perform preventative, predictive, and critical maintenance. Building Works provides interactive access to the information in three ways. The first view, the directory of rooms. What differentiates Building Works from other electronic tools is that the equipment and finishes are associated to the room or area in which it resides. Clicking on the room pulls up finishes. Clicking associated equipment links you to equipment, door, and door hardware associated with that room. Clicking on a piece of equipment shows further details on manufacturer, model number, serial number, and the documents associated with that specific piece of equipment. The equipment category is another view to find the same building information. The category is organized by division, system, or manufacturer. Clicking on the electrical system pulls up a list of electrical equipment. Clicking on the piece of equipment links to the same detail page as we saw through the directory of rooms. The third view is through the drawing sheets. DataSphere houses PDF copies of construction and as-built drawings. Clicking on a link to a drawing and then on a highlighted piece of equipment on that drawing links to the submittal. And the submittal links to the manual. And the manual links to the manufacturer's website. There are other important documents to retain with the project. The DataSphere documents category houses that information and is subdivided into categories. Contractor warranty letters, correspondence, equipment manuals, photos and videos, reports, and approved and informational submittals. You will find the project specification manual as well as RFIs, ASIs, change orders, CAD files, and renderings or models in the drawings category as well. The last category is contacts. Project participants are accessed through different views depending on how you like to search. We have a search function that will become your best friend when navigating through the DataSphere. Click Control F, type in a few letters in the search box, and the highlighted search answers will become visible. It is imperative to maintain the facility to achieve maximum efficiency and to prolong the life of equipment and finishes. With an easy-to-use point-and-click electronic system, your facility people will have the tool to maintain and sustain the building as it was designed. DataSphere is the corporate memory for the life of your facility.
One of the key features that I wanted to make sure is that this product is updatable. We do lots of work all the time. And if this product was perfect for six months and then it became outdated, that would not work for us. So I had to make sure it was updatable, it is updatable, there's, the company has a process for that. How we think it'll work, we would give access to our maintenance and operations technical leads and then we would have access at the executive office. So essentially, on a Chromebook or on an iPad, our technical leads could be in the field checking on a work order and could pull up drawings from the school and look at whatever piece of equipment is having a problem and be able to pull up all the maintenance and operations data for that piece of equipment to include the warranty. So that they could know, is this still under warranty or not? What part number am I looking for, all the information available, how it was built, any changes that have happened, had happened along the way would be accessible there. So the high school work orders would require that systematically, or we would systematize this, that as a work order comes in, it's being checked against DataSphere to know, are we sending somebody out to verify a warranty issue or are we sending somebody out to fix something and it's not under warranty anymore? Additionally, it allows us to make the appropriate phone calls on what, who the manufacturer is, who the product rep is, so that maybe instead of having us go out and spend an hour and come back to the office and make a phone call to a product rep and then go back out again to meet with them, we can streamline that process and do it all in one shot. Once the work is complete, this, what we call the MR, the maintenance report, is uploaded to DataSphere for reference. So we would actually add a new set of files in the DataSphere for each of these pieces of equipment or each of these rooms where everything that we ever do inside those rooms gets a maintenance record and we can go back indefinitely and see the history of everything that we did inside of the space or on the particular piece of equipment. that we did inside of the space or on the particular piece of equipment. This is kind of a draft updating process that I put together. It's a work in progress. It's pretty basic. Essentially, this maintenance report gets completed by the assigned MNO employee. Once it's completed, that maintenance report gets sent to the MNO Executive Office and we load that maintenance report into a file sharing service that DataSphere provides. About every six months, DataSphere updates, updates the DataSphere for us. So they'll take all the files that are out there to be uploaded and they will upload those into the system. And then we will validate, before we pay them to do that, we will validate that those updates have taken effect inside of the DataSphere. So there are four tiers of service that DataSphere offers. The first is called Basic, and Basic is just, is, I don't say just, it is all the items in list form. So it does not include the floor plan that's linkable. It's just items in list form, and it includes only the major systems. So it'll include your electrical, mechanical, and plumbing items. Basic with links, it includes all those things, but it also includes the floor plan that's linked. So you can go to the floor plan, find the piece of equipment and click on it, and it'll take you to all the information on it. The Expanded includes finishes. So it'll include paint and flooring and door hardware and window hardware and ceiling grid information. And then the Expanded with Links includes the floor plan and is organized by room that The costs associated are listed up here for both the high schools and all four of the tiers. The initial cost includes the initial setup of the project. So DataSphere will meet with us and meet with McCowen Gordon and determine how we want this product to look in the end. So they will develop that product, project plan, and then they'll execute it. So they will reach out into Procore, which is a system that McCowen Gordon uses to track construction information. They will reach out into Procore and start extracting that information out of Procore and building the DataSphere for us. That process will happen as soon as we sign a contract with them to do that. It'll take a while to get it built. What's worth a lot is that they, they know what data needs to be there and whether we're missing data, and they will, they will reach out to McCowen Gordon and get the data. So if we're missing a serial number on a piece of equipment or missing a shop drawing that should be there, they'll make sure that all the holes are filled in on the information and that the information is complete once it's finished. They'll provide training on the program and they provide one year of upgrades. So one year of updating the information is included in the base fee. So at this point, I welcome your questions. My recommendation at this point is that we move forward. However, we'll come back next time for a discussion on the topic. Are there any questions that I can answer? Yes, ma'am?
Well, I have a couple or maybe a few questions. Where are they located? If they're going to come here and meet with us and set this up, are they somewhere?
They're based out of St. Louis.
St. Louis, okay. How long have they been in business?
Since they've, they started selling DataSphere in 2005.
Okay, because I would worry that, well, if you really only have to pay them $200 a year, they're going to have to get a lot of new accounts in order to keep in business. And if they go out of business, what happens to the data? I know that in my office, we had some product that organized our data and, and then they just kept making it more and more expensive to stay in it, and finally we got out of it, but it was very difficult to find a way to save all the data in an organized fashion once we weren't with them anymore.
Right. This is certainly a concern of mine, which is why I wanted to know when they started selling DataSphere. So they've been operating for 11 years now. One of the keys is that the data doesn't live in their system, it lives in our system. What they provide is the, is the online interface with that data. But that will be a question that I will ask them is hypothetically, if you close up shop, what are we left with? Because I would like to be able to access the data either through DataSphere, which is really just an interface that's very usable. I'd also like to access it through Windows and see where all that data is at. That's what we're doing on the other schools is we've just got a Windows-based file-saving system that, that we're getting from IPD. So we will have all the information, it's just not, the graphic interface is not there. Yes, ma'am?
I assume that this is all new as well as old that's going to be put in?
At this point, it will be new.
All the new?
All the new.
And then the old, old, from the old areas, whatever's left that's old, will that be entered at some point in time or?
It, I haven't talked to them about that, and it depends on how much information we can find.
Okay.
To give it, to feed them.
Okay.
They have to be fed the information. Certainly would be a goal of mine to do that, but I would need to check with them on whether the price included that. I don't believe it did. I believe it just included renovated and, and new square footage.
Okay.
So I'll need to check with them on that.
So for example, the South High pool is being renovated, so all of that would be included?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Is there an alternate or a comparable company that's doing something like this?
Not that I've been able to find.
So this is, this is?
It's fairly proprietary, yes. An example of how this might work is we have a roof problem at the new South High, and so we go up on the roof and we notice that there's a, an installation problem. We call, we call the contractor, we're still under warranty, we call the contractor. The contractor comes and repairs the roof issue. What we do is we prepare that maintenance report for that item, and that maintenance report gets uploaded to DataSphere. So the next time we have a roof problem, maybe it's two years from that then, and everybody's long forgotten about that roof problem we had two years ago. When we go into the DataSphere and pull up the roofing plan, that maintenance report lives there on that roofing plan. We can click on it and we can see that, hey, this was repaired in warranty two years ago, and that may or may not be valid or relevant at the time, but we have the information to know that this was a problem that never got fixed. We thought it did, but it didn't, and then it becomes a latent defect issue that we can then go after the contractor to repair. That's kind of a simplified version, but I know roofing's a hot topic right now and it is for me as well.
And run that cost again for me, this total cost, that's the single year of input for both schools, plus then you said it included what, $200 where?
It's, $44,500 is, is the top tier for both of the high schools, which includes one year of updating information.
One year of updates.
Right. After that, it costs about $200 a year for 15 or 20 things to get updated in the facility. This is not the only product that Building Works sells. To your question about how viable is this as a business, this is a, this is not, this is not their bread and butter product. They sell other things.
I kind of want to, I wish that we could ask our IT department, they're probably not called the IT department, MIS?
MIS.
Okay. To, to look at it closely and see what it would take for us to make a similar thing ourselves and, or at least to update it, make a similar thing and see if it would be easy enough to do, if possible.
I don't know if we actually hire any software developers here though.
It would take some programmers to be able to do that, and with the amount of time that they have right now, it'd be very, very difficult to do that.
Okay. I was thinking maybe $44,000 worth of time they could spend on it, but that would be if we knew it was going to work, so.
Right.
Okay.
Maybe, well, a question I have that, that before, before this comes before you for approval is, is this going to work with our network system? If the data resides on our servers, how does that work? Because I'm not, I don't know that I'm super interested in a product where we don't own the data and can't, can't have access to it.
I guess I'm a little confused about the one year. Construction on the high schools is projected out two years.
Right.
How is that, I mean, are you going to wait until the second year of construction to, to purchase this and have them enter in everything? Or is this going to be a $44,000 purchase this year and next year and then 200 going on down the road?
It's going to be a base fee of $44,500. The project will last two years before it is fully up and running. That's a one-time, that this $44,500 is a one-time fee.
And includes the entire construction, entire?
Yes.
Even though that's going to last two years?
Correct. So they'll spend two years working on it as, as the information is available, working on it. And then to, a year beyond that, we'll get data updated included in this fee, and then after that, so in 2019, we'll be looking at a couple hundred dollars a year per school for updating the data.
And then how do we, I mean, I think you went over it, but I think I need a little bit more concrete into my brain. I'm kind of a data, good data in gets you good data coming out, so I understand how this new data is going to get in there. But moving forward, let's say in five years, we're still going to have the software theoretically. How are we going to make sure that that roofing repair gets put into the system?
By making it into a standardized process for the way MNO does business, which, which ties into...
And how does that, what does that look like?
It's still in draft form right now, frankly. We've had, we've had work order processes that have fallen by the wayside in time. What, what I'm going to do this year is, one of my goals is to reinvigorate the work order process and the, and the standard by which we do that. The standard by which we, we do a lot of good work. We don't always keep track of the work that we did.
Documentation is what I lack the most, so don't worry about that.
Just one other question, Chris. And this is a great, it sounds like a great process. It sounds very good. But are there other clients that we can maybe contact?
Yes.
Okay.
I will do that. I know that...
Was it Webster University, one of them, that I saw on the website?
Webster, Missouri's Science and Technology, former RALA, used them. Obviously, there's a hospital example on there. I will reach out and ask some questions and see how satisfied folks are, and I'll bring that information back to you.
Any additional questions or concerns you'd like to bring up before we move on?
I had one more. You had said $200 per year per school, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Or so, 200 for Central, 200 for South. Is that what we're thinking?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Chris, just for clarification, when you say an update, an annual update each year, basically anytime you change something within the building, you change a specific equipment, you do this repair, whatever, that would be an update.
Correct.
And so then we would do that annually and however, 15 or 20 or whatever, however many we have, that's how many we would have that year.
Right.
So it just keeps the data accurate.
Right.
Okay.
The worst thing that happens with these systems is they don't get maintained, and then it becomes a giant paperweight, basically, that you go in there and it's like, well, that's not right, it wasn't updated. So I'm very conscious of that.
I don't think we have any more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on in our agenda to our approval of our consent agenda items, which include the minutes of our August 23, 2016 regular meeting, our personnel reports, our financial reports, which include our August bills list and our August bond bills list, our bond budget summary, and our professional development, which includes our individual development plans, college credit, building staff development plans, and district staff development plans. We are approving a Central High School change order to McCowen Gordon Construction in the amount of $95,134 for the replacement of in-ground water service lines at Central High School. We're also approving an additional fee request from DLR Group in the amount of $21,475 for additional design outside the original scope of work at Central High School. Can I get a motion to approve these consent agenda items?
Your Hon, your Honor. Sorry. Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda item.
All right, thank you. I have a motion. What do you want to second? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board, now is your Seeing no one rushing up to do so, we'll move on to our Central High School Journalism Out-of-State Field Trip with Mr. Garber.
All right, good evening. Joining me this evening is Ms. Shelby DeGul. She's our broadcast teacher. This evening, we are here to talk to you about six journalism students, two of which are still here, that would like to attend the National Journalism Education Association Conference in Seattle, Washington on April 6 through 9 of 2017. JEA has been a huge part of our lives, growing up in high school and through college, and so we know how important it is to take the kids to the next level. These six students, like I said, two of which are here, have been a part of a group that, and it was kind of their idea to get this going, but a successful group that's been college and career-ready, that have earned several awards at the state level, as well as being a part of the state championship team a couple of years ago, or last year. And I think at this point, it's, it's time to give them that opportunity to see bigger and better things. Attending this event will give them a chance to learn more about writing, photography, design, and video, which you guys obviously know is an important thing right now. And so with Shelby and student Keaton Beach, who does a lot of the creation of the content that you see on the video boards at the stadium, they will be learning even more. And, let's see, I think we can just take that broadcast part to the next level with this as well. Registration, hotel, flight, all of that is about $1,000 a student. So we're looking at about $8,000 when you include us. Fundraising-wise, we have already started fundraising. We were actually shooting for this last year, and so a couple of the students, I believe, already have accounts created that have some money in them. And most of the money that we raise come from the photos, sports posters, highlight videos, things that we create for different activities at Central. And so hopefully, we'll just continue that process and use that money to fund it. The students will, and Ms. DeGul and I will be required to miss two school days as well. But would you like to say anything?
All right, any questions or how I'll entertain a motion?
Madam President, I move we approve the Central High Journalism Trip to Seattle, Washington on April 6 through 9, 2017, as presented.
I have a motion and Mary Ann just registered. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Moving on to our discussion agenda, we don't have any, so we'll move on to our school board committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, which include September 20th is our shilling ribbon cutting open house at 6:30. Thursday, September 29th is our KASV Fall Education Summit at the By Center at 11:30. Thursday, October 6th is the candidate forum at the Visit Salina Annex at 6:00 PM. And Wednesday, October 12th is the NEA Salina Candidate Forum at South High at 5:00 PM. Brett, would you like to start us off with our?
I have nothing.
Reports?
I had the privilege of attending the Regional, Region One Teacher of the Year Luncheon Saturday, and as always, I came away very inspired by the many, many fine teachers who were recognized. And a teacher from Junction City and a teacher from Manhattan will be representing the first congressional district as finalists this year. And I don't see how the people in the legislature who were questioning the way they were selected could improve upon the selection process.
And?
Yes, I attended several ribbon cuttings, Oakdale and Cottonwood and Heartland. I think those all happened since the last meeting. I sat through a webinar on the Juvenile Justice Bill, oh, no, webinar, webinar was on the school funding on September the 1st, so trying to get a handle on that. I sat through a Juvenile Justice Stakeholders Meeting at Kansas Westland on the 31st of August. Um, just... August, trying to figure out how that new law is going to affect everybody, including the schools and others. I also went to the Teacher of the Year Celebration, and I attended the Heartland Policy Council Meeting on the 1st of September, which was the last, well, because of the Heartland Head Start Funding through federal funding, their fiscal year ends at the end of September, so that was the last of that year's policy council, and they'll have a new set of parents and others in October. It was my first policy council meeting where we actually got to use the front door of Heartland programs, so that was exciting for me.
I also attended the Kansas Teacher of the Year banquet Saturday, and that was, it's always excellent, not only in decoration, but food, and it's excellent in the candidates that they choose, and two of ours were there also, and I think they were excited and honored to be there. I attended a Salina Education Foundation Meeting, Kennedy-Hartland Ribbon Cutting, Kansas Association of School Board Legislative Committee Meeting in Topeka, and we're putting together a new policy handbook, cutting out a great deal, so we may want to look over that prior to our finishing it up in November. We decided that some of that's been so old, like 30 years old, it's time to clean up. Also attended the Salina NEA Executive Board Meeting.
All right, Carol?
No reports, other than those that have been given.
Ramona?
And I also attended the Kennedy-Hartland, Oakdale, and Cottonwood Ribbon Cuttings. In the interest of healthy lifestyles, I also participated in the Family Fun Walk after Oakdale. I did, it was good, get those steps in. And then attended the Kansas Teacher of the Year Region 1 Luncheon, and what I walked away with from that is that they were no longer nominees, they were winners. And that, I think, was, it resonated throughout the rest of the afternoon, and for me, to this point, and I definitely commended both Mr. Montoya and Mrs. Rohr on just being present and representing USD 305 at that event.
All right. Now I have attended too many activities to talk about, so we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Just to follow up on the K20Y, it really is a privilege to be part of that, and to be able to host it here in Salina, we've done it for a number of years, I think they do a nice job with it, but just the quality of the folks that are represented by that program is really pretty phenomenal. I mean, you can go to that meeting, come away just feeling, you know, everything that's right about public education, irrespective of what you're reading here, you know, and so it's just an outstanding program. So, that being said, just a brief report on enrollment numbers, what we have to date, as of today, we have 7,025 students enrolled, K-12 in our school system. That does include Opportunity Now, it also includes Salina West. Last year, our audited number was 6,987, and so we're up about 38 students from last year, and with enrollment of 7,000, that's, it's not a huge increase, but it's still an increase, and so that is very, very good. Interestingly, I think there were some questions about the impact of all day kindergarten, and what that might have on our enrollment numbers, and interestingly, we have 559 kindergarten students enrolled, I think last year we had 551, so the numbers on kindergarten are pretty stable. They haven't really gone up a tremendous amount. But that being said, I mean, upward growth is positive growth, and that's a good thing. And so it's always good seeing that. It's not, as you know, doesn't impact school funding, because we're on the second year of the block grant, and so, you know, those numbers have been locked in for one fiscal year already, now second fiscal year, but it is still a positive sign to see growth, and that's good for our school system and good for our community. So, again, that won't be official until we have, obviously, our September 20th count days next week, and then they'd still give us a period of time after that to find those students that haven't shown up on September 20th. You have to be present and attending one day before and one day after, up until October 4th, and then even then after that, it's not official until KSDE comes out and audits our numbers, and they'll tell us what our actual amount is at that time. So it's a good sign, and so it's positive for our school system. Appreciate the comments about the ribbon cuttings, Heartland, Oakdale, and Cottonwood are all very, very good programs. Next up is Shilling Elementary School, which is September 20th. Put that on your calendar, it's going to be exciting as well. And then on the heels of that, on the horizon, if you will, is Husner, Sunset, and Stewart. And we haven't set those dates yet, but those should be sometime, I would say, beginning in October through November, maybe even December, when we'll have those finished. Opportunity Now will be shortly after that, Opportunity Now should be November, December. So those will be the next four buildings that are scheduled for completion this fall. So things are moving forward quite well and on schedule, and so appreciate all the work that the Bond Project Director's Office has done, and Chris Upson and his crew, so. Speaking of Horizon, had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago, I think maybe last week, to recognize two Horizon Award winners for USD 305. These are teachers in our school system, one at the elementary level, one at the secondary level, who have completed one full year of teaching, and are recognized as outstanding teachers, or potential for outstanding teachers moving forward, based upon the quality of their work for that one year. I was very, very pleased to be able to go over to Salina West and present one Horizon Award winner to Ashley Winger. Ashley has been teaching for us for a year, she teaches science at Salina West, and in both of these situations, it was really, brought kind of tears to your eyes, because both of them have very interesting stories. And that's all I'm going to say, they just had very interesting stories, but they were outstanding, outstanding teachers, and Ashley's doing excellent, excellent work at Salina West. And then shortly after that, I had the opportunity to travel to Cottonwood and introduce the elementary teacher to Jericho Parker, and Jericho's been teaching a full year now, and either Ashley or Jericho, if you have an opportunity, you're out, and you're at West, or you're at Cottonwood, stop in to see, because we're talking about two outstanding, outstanding educators, who are all about making connections with kids and relationships with kids. And so I just can't say enough about both Ms. Winger and Ms. Parker, two outstanding teachers there that are being recognized. Had the opportunity on September 5th to attend the Candidates Forum at Adstra, is a good opportunity to listen and hear the relative views, the respective views of all the candidates, from state offices to county offices, to State Board of Education, and so it was very informative, very enlightening, I know the Journal covered it, and did a nice job of doing that as well, very well attended. So it's kind of our first crack, if you will, at finding out the positions of all the candidates. And so we do have, I believe, the League of Women Voters has the Candidates Forum on October 6th.
That's along with, excuse me, along with the Chamber of Commerce, we cooperate on that one.
Okay, it's cooperative, okay, thank you for that. And then also, NEA Salina, I believe, as you can verify this, but I think, believe NEA Salina has set up a forum, or kind of a meet and greet on October 12th, is that correct, Jonathan? What time does that begin?
Five o'clock.
Okay.
Guest speaker, and 5:30.
And that's at South High, correct?
South High.
Okay, and so that's another date to get on your calendar, so. And it's that time of year, I mean, we really need, and I would encourage everyone out there to really get involved politically, in terms of what's happening in our state and across the country, because only when you're involved can you impact and effect change, so. The other item, I do want to mention, I had the opportunity, and I appreciate Mrs. Zimmerman sharing this at Rotary yesterday, but the Kansas Wesleyan event that was held with League of Women Voters last evening, it was, we had two Supreme Court justices there, Justice Byers and Justice Lukert, and it was really interesting, just listening to their views, listening to what's happening at the Supreme Court level, and just kind of how things work, basically. But I think a lot of that, too, it's important to understand that there's politics, and there's politics, and the court system is considered apolitical, but there's a movement afoot, and so we need to be very involved in what's going on with our Supreme Court as well. We do have hearings scheduled for the Ganna decision on September 21st. I plan to attend that, as do several team members, to hear firsthand kind of what's happening. But it is something that we need to, folks need to pay attention to what's happening with respect to the political process as it relates to the seating of our justices, so that's enough said on that. Had the opportunity on September 7, I'm sorry, we had our first administrative team meeting, and that's, we had 40-plus administrators here. The focus of that was school safety and security, and we spent two hours talking about what we are doing in our schools procedurally, protocols, practices, drills, to ensure that all of our schools are safe and secure, even with respect to all the construction that's going on. You might imagine how difficult it would be to keep them safe and secure, but we still have protocols and processes in place to do that. Had the opportunity with Hannah Stamball, Celine County Emergency Management Director, who came and then brought some first responders with her, law enforcement personnel, EMS personnel, fire personnel, just to share with our administrators procedures and protocols that they must follow, because it's extremely important that we're all on the same page, if and when we have a 911 call and any of those folks showing up at our buildings, and what they expect of us and what we expect of them. And so it was a great conversation to have that. We also are developing resources, procedures for key card access, as you know, with our bond construction projects, our two high schools and our two middle schools will be completely key card accessible on all exterior doors. So it's important that we have protocols in place for that, and then we also have protocols in place for controlled entry. And now that we have controlled entry in about three of our buildings, that's completely functional, what does that process look like? You know, and when we have folks come in, procedurally, how does that work? You have to buzz them into the office, they have to be buzzed out to the rest of the building, so there's protocols and procedures that we have to follow to ensure that our students and our staff are safe at all times. And then we also have expectations, basic expectations of all our schools, that we have regular building crisis team meetings monthly, and then we also have lockdown drills, we have evacuation drills, they attend their alternate site. Actually, had the opportunity at Oakdale, they had, shortly after that, they had an evacuation drill, traveled to the alternate site, which is the Donna Vanir Center, and they did very, very well, evacuated, very organized, and then all the students walked over to the Vanir Center, and it's important that they go to the alternate site, and they know how that works, too, if and when they ever have to do that. So it was a good meeting, and a necessary meeting, it's a meeting that I want folks to understand that we take very, very seriously school safety and security, and we'll always do that, and we'll continue to practice that on a regular basis. And that's all I have, Madam President.
And I believe we need an executive session for personnel?
Yes, Madam President, if I could, requested the board an executive session for personnel for 10 minutes, please.
Wouldn't anybody like to make that motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at, do you want to go in at 6:07, or would you rather go in at 6:10?
6:10.
Yeah, let's do it. At 6:10 for 10 minutes, for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations, because of this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed, and that the Board of Education reconvene in open session at 6:20 in the conference room.
I have a motion, would anybody like to make a motion?
Second, here. Keep going, you've been...
You're just going to make my head leak, don't think.
It's court too much lately, sorry.
All right, so I have a motion in a second, any discussion before voting? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, all those opposed, same sign, motion carries, seven zero. Thank you.